Always welcome. We're always happy, I should say, to talk about crime. It's our business. It's how we interact. There's never a day that goes by in our building where we don't discuss better initiatives, crime trends, how to respond to those, and how to try to predict the future. We know what cities to look at to anticipate what's coming to Corpus Christi. Leave it out there. Our cities like Houston and San Antonio, things happen and we can calculate nine months to a year that this is going to be happening here. So, yeah, we're really good at that. And today, I look forward to it because I have an opportunity to showcase some of my superstars. You don't get to see them too often. All of you have been to the station, I think. Ms. Paxton, you will soon, I think. Is that correct? But you get some time to sit with us and banner and ask questions and understand who's serving you as police executives. And I have an outstanding team. As Peter said, I have a strong bench. They have many, many decades of experience. And today, Billy will be doing the primary presentation. And all these good folks here, deputy chiefs and assistant chiefs will be standing by for any questions that they might be able to answer. So, by design, we just posted numbers because we want you to feel free to ask questions on any dimension or anything that you feel you would like to know about. So, we look forward to your questions and we look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Markle.
Thank you, Chief. Billy Reed Love, Deputy Chief for the Police Department. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege here to speak to you today about crime statistics. As the chief mentioned, this is a result of Councilmember Vaughn requesting some data. She wanted to go back prior to COVID to look at some of the things, how it might have changed during that and after COVID, as well as a focus on family-related crime and gun-related crime. So, if we take a look at this, or one thing, when you see these years, you'll see changes, and those are important numbers. But we're looking at this daily. You know, we don't wait till the end of the year and say, well, we had a 24% increase in auto theft. We better do something about it. No, as soon as we see an increase in any crime, we begin to address it. So, when we address crime, you always have to look at three things. There's a victim involved in it, there's a suspect involved in it, and there's a location. So, all of our strategies include that, as well as, the most important part is the community partnership to help us with these. Because no crime can be solved with just arresting people. We're never going to arrest our way out of crime. So, let me give you a couple of examples, but I want to encourage questions. So, one of the things was, I spoke about, was 24% increase in auto theft between 23 and 24. What occurred during that time was in the beginning of...
Bless you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. In the beginning of that, of the year, there was a TikTok challenge that went out with juveniles to steal Kia and Hyundai vehicles. And it was so simple that all you needed was a thumb drive, like you put in your USB computer, to get in certain models of cars, about 2016 to 2021 Kia and Hondas, Hyundai, not Honda, Honda. And you could literally turn the car on and drive off. And then, these kids would be selling from five to six cars at night. The youngest offender we had was 12 years old, could barely reach the pedals. And they used them to create, do other crimes such as auto burglaries and just other, steal other Hyundai. So, it was a little challenging. So, we put together a task force internally to identify them, arrest them. But again, like, that's not enough. The other things, our auto theft task force got ahold of, from the Neoces County tax collector can tell us, when you register your vehicle, who has registered a Hyundai or a Kia in Corpus Christi. And we mailed out public awareness literature to them to tell them, hey, your car could be suspect to being involved in crime, as well as contacting Kia. And like the chief mentioned, this trend had started a little earlier in 2023. And some of the other bigger cities didn't hit us till January of 2024. So, our auto theft task force was already talking to our Kia dealerships and Hyundai dealerships about a recall that was getting ready to come out. And when it came out, we notified all those people, get into Hyundai, get into your Kia dealer. For free, they got the new ignition systems. And that was one of the other big things that brought that down, besides identifying those kids. So, then, once we had him in custody, we made sure we got with our juvenile justice probation department. Judge McCoy there was very interested in this. He saw it happen. He was seeing these young adults in his courtroom, all over this kind of silliness of stealing these cars. And they brought in some victims. They made these kids come in several times a week to report to their probation officer, brought them in front of some victims that, you know, a single mom, while they were having fun, when she woke up the morning, she couldn't go to work. Her car seats were in the car. And so, they got a little more human element relating to what they had done. And it really, by the time we hit about April, we were back to regular numbers, and had a decrease throughout the rest of the year. But that first few months really gave us an uptick there. So, that's a good example of, you know, where we looked at it, we saw a problem. And then, when you look at aggravated assaults for that same year, 23 to 24, 0.6% increase. And we think we could live with that, right, as a community? But no, you got to look within those numbers. At the same time, in the latter part of 2024, we were having a significant increase in juvenile crime, specifically violent crime. They went, juveniles went from having an 8% normal average of being involved in homicides and nonviolent shootings to 20%. And also, 20% increase in juvenile arrests for felonies. So, we adopted some of those same strategies with our partners at Neoces County Juvenile Justice System. And they actually added a new probation officer to go out and do night checks. But internally, in the department, the Operations Bureau created a violent crime task force. And that couldn't have been done without the council and mayor and the city manager providing us extra police officers a couple of years ago, with the forethought of like, hey, there's some issues that we need to address. We were able to take a whole shift of officers, add them to the evening shift to focus on the traffic-related incidents that involved with these people, the racing, that's all involved, the racing, congregating in parking lots, nightclubs. This is where these violent crimes are happening. And they've been able to interdict that. Since we created that, we've had 64 guns taken off the street by that unit alone. And that's not with all the other officers doing the work. 64 guns by the violent crime unit. We also created a NIBIN task force. We sent two officers over to the ATF. And NIBIN is National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, where every time there's a crime involving a firearm, and we're able to see some evidence, whether it's projectiles from the weapon, the weapon itself, or casings from automatic weapons, it goes in a national database. And we see that some of our guns have been used up in San Antonio, Houston, and then locally, they're used in several different, you know, drive-by shootings. And each one of those crimes, if they're not connected, you wouldn't know that. You have a little bit of information on this one, but not enough to make a case. But when you start, you're able to put those together, and these investigators concentrate on that, they're able to build cases and get people in custody. And get, one of the primary goals is get those illegal guns off the street. We also started a weekly shooting team specifically for this, the problem with these young adults and firearms. The ATF, the Neoces County District Attorney's Office, the juvenile prosecutors, as well as juvenile probation, adult probation, attend those meetings every week. And we go over every shooting or gun-related crime that happened the week before, come up with strategies, get everybody. Sometimes, it's just a matter of, we don't have a good case on this person, but guess what? They're on probation. And the probation officer can get that person in, get them revoked. And then, we just look at the, when we look at, when we started that task force in the latter part of October of that year of 2024, and we look at that same timeline, we've had a 13% decrease in nonfatal shootings, we've had 21% decrease in aggravated assaults, and 13% decrease in kind of those Part I major crimes, if you look at it, the homicide, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault combined. So, those are a couple of examples. And again, if you ever, if you see something while I'm talking, you just want to, just let me know. I can stop and address it with our team here. We've got all of our different bureaus represented here to be able to talk about crime. This is something we talk weekly about, daily about. So, one thing I wanted to also bring up was, you mentioned Councilmember Vaughn was concerned about COVID and how that impacted crime. So, one of the things, when we studied this, is burglary, prior to COVID, if you see it's very high, 22, 200 a year, 2100 a year. And at that time, it was residential burglaries, two residential burglaries to every one business burglary. During COVID, during 2020, that flipped. We went to having two business burglaries and one to every one residential burglary. And we all know what the reason is. That is because businesses were closed, and everyone was staying home during that time period. But for some reason, it has never gone back for the rest. So, from 2021, 22, 23, and 24, and the trend is continuing, we now have two business burglaries for every one home burglary.
But where are you here?
Right there on...
Burglar?
Burglar. I'm sorry. Yeah, burglary. So, you see, we had 2200 or so in 17, 18, 19. Started to come down a little bit, but 2020, it fell, really, a mountain fell as much as it flipped from burglaries of residents to burglaries of businesses. Now, the trend we are seeing right now that we're concerned about is these business burglaries that involve the theft of copper. They're occurring at businesses under construction, homes under construction, and businesses that are abandoned or vacant. These crooks go in and steal the air conditioning system, steal the copper. And we're considering, we've been working on with legal, updating our ordinance involving metal recyclers, that they have to report in certain things to make it harder for these criminals to sell this copper. But actually, the state right now is looking at some stiffer laws. So, we're going to kind of wait to see how that plays out in Austin. Because again, most trends that we see in Corpus Christi have started in other locations. Okay? Any questions about kind of this? Do we go on to, we're going to talk about the incidents involving firearms? Okay? So, when you look at that, obviously, homicide, it's always going to make up the largest portion of any homicides. Other homicides involve stabbing, strangulation, or motor vehicles. Sexual assault, that's a very low number. All right? That question people come up, we've had in the last four years, no sexual assaults involved with firearm. And that's actually not uncommon. We'll see when we get into the family assaults. 80 to 85% of our sexual assaults involve a family member or intimate partner. It's very rare that we have stranger-related homicides. When we do have that, we take them very serious because as soon as we have one stranger-related, I'm sorry, sexual assault, we make sure we're on top of that immediately because that's a concern. You could have a serial rapist, which, right now, we don't have any that we're working. We have one in Caspian Apartments, you may have seen, that has been breaking into some apartments, and there's been some attempts. And we're still continuing to work that and take it very seriously. Obviously, robberies, you need a weapon to threaten someone. That's why handguns are used in that. And then aggravated assaults, you'll see, obviously, you need a handgun to, or handgun or rifle, or firearm to cause serious bodily injury. One of the trends we're seeing with aggravated assaults is not only just situations where people are being shot at, but when just guns are being displayed and pointed at people, that's aggravated assault also. That's one of the trends that seems to be on the... Yes?
You want to turn on your... There you go.
Thanks. Is there a specific age that's doing all of these?
Right. So, if we look at from about 15 to 25 males, but females cannot be excluded. We have taken some guns off females, and actually, they've been, but it's a more, females are trending up, but historically, males from the age of 15 to 25.
So, is it because there's more accessibility to guns?
That would be my opinion. And I think my colleagues would share that. There's more guns on the street. From when we started, I started in 1990, it was rare to find a young man with a gun. There was the gangs. And when we did find them, there were 380s and 25s, very low quality. These young men and women have high caliber, very nice handguns, some with laser sights, some with the same optics that we have on ours. And of course, we also know that 224 handguns were stolen out of unlocked vehicles last year in our city.
But it's really scary that they've got those powerful guns.
It is.
But we don't, we don't know where they're coming from.
Well, we believe most of them are stolen.
Stolen? Y'all think most of them are stolen?
Right. Well, we've recovered many of them during...
Wow. Scary. And it's scary that they're that young.
Right. And so, we do do a lot of public awareness through our auto theft task force to the gun owners. We want gun owners to be responsible, not to leave them in their cars unlocked. When they get home, taken, and most of them are occurring at home, either parked in the driveway, unlocked overnight. So, we're asking them, bring them inside or lock them up in the...
And do we have gangs here?
We do. We do. And we have a gang unit that works very closely with our violent crime unit, as well as our detectives, the NIBIN unit. There's a gang member that we're dealing with or targeting every week that's involved in, on that shooting report.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Okay. I noticed on the statistics you provided to us, there's nothing that is drug-related or gang-related. And so, I was curious as to why that was left off.
It was, basically, we received the information from Councilmember Vaughn, and it was pretty broad. And that's what we...
That's all right.
Yeah. So, we were glad to speak to that, to gang or drug-related.
Drug-related, right.
Yeah. I mean, we could spend, we could, each one of these, we could break out and really speak for a long time, and we'd be glad to do that. So, if we want to come back and talk specifically about drug crimes or gangs, that would be a...
Well, I mean, you know, gangs could be a whole day topic. I mean, prison gangs, foreign gangs, local gangs.
The newest thing we have now is what's called hybrid gangs.
What?
Hybrid gangs, where they don't follow traditional gangs that we had seen. Like you said, when we came up, where they, they're in this gang one day, and the next day, they're in a different gang, which it doesn't make sense, but that's how they do it. They'll shoot at one another one day, and they'll be riding around the car together the next day.
It's free agency.
Right. And there's, yeah, and they are involved in drug trafficking and gun violence.
Okay. So, the second part of this is, obviously, in terms of metrics, you have arrests and reports. And then, you also have the actual adjudication of it and, you know, convictions. Where do we fall? And then, that's not in here either. I mean, how successful are you at either getting pleas, or getting convictions, or getting, you know, violent criminals off the street? I mean, there's, you know, it's one thing to have it reported, the second thing to actually have it. Are you getting cooperation from the District Attorney's Office? I mean, there's a lot going there. Because ultimately, if that doesn't happen, you still get blamed.
Correct, yes. And there is some frustration occasionally with the District Attorney's Office. We do meet with them monthly. We're talking to them weekly. They're attending this shooting meeting weekly. We are focusing on getting guns off the street, and then we don't want them going back into the hands of these individuals. So, we've asked them to do that, and they have been doing that so far. We've been asking for, in these racing events, to not just give slaps on the hands, all these different things. And it's really up to them. We've been successful in some, and some, we've made some phone calls because we didn't like, they got a plea deal we didn't agree with. But that's the unique thing about the criminal justice system. We're just one cog in that. You have the prosecutors, and they have a role that they have to play. And we're sometimes at odds with them. And we do voice our concerns.
Well, can you provide us, at some point in the future, some statistics as to, you know, the arrests, what they do?
Clearance rates, yeah.
Do they, and when I say clearance, I mean, that can mean a lot of things. It could mean dismissals. It could mean, you know, prosecutions. We need to kind of understand that. You know, I can't talk to the DA, Granberry, if I don't have that information.
Right. So, when we look at our clearance rates, it's when we've, you know, cleared the case by identifying the suspect, we've arrested them, or we filed the case with the DA's office, or we have, often, the victim doesn't want to prosecute. It's still a clearance as long as we have identified the suspect.
All that information is useful, so.
Yes, sir.
Can't hold accountable if you don't have the data.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I agree. I think it'd be great to see what's gang-related, what Councilman just brought up, the dismissals, prosecutions, clearance rates, arrests, prevention, you know, what, so these numbers are going up, for example, the 60, I think, collected, you said 64?
64 firearms that we've confiscated this year, illegal firearms. We don't confiscate people's legal firearms.
Right. So, what does that number look like a year ago, a year before that, a year before that? I don't have to...
I don't have those off the top of my head.
No, but I'm saying, those are the kind of numbers I think we would like to see.
Sure.
Because as we're adding police officers...
Right.
You're doing a whole lot of different things. But we have to see what, so how are more officers affecting certain crime?
Right.
Right? And then, what are we doing? There's a list of crimes, but when you're looking at children committing these crimes, what are we doing about that? Right? And I don't know that that's necessarily your role, but I'm sure it's police officers.
One of our great programs we have is our PALIS, our Police Athletic League, you know, where we're in a challenged neighborhood off of Brownlee Street. We're getting kids in there that...
But how do we know that is preventing? How do we know that is affecting that number? Right? And you may not, and that might not be in your role. That might be like, you know, a partnership with someone. I mean, I don't know. I don't know. But...
It takes a lot of different facets. One of the unique things about the criminal justice, the science of criminal justice, there's no way you can actually do a science experiment because there's so many things that impact crime. We can't have a control group and just take one small thing out of them, like, hey, we're going to put them in PAL, when they also, it could have to do with their family. It could have to do with economics, could do with their other challenges.
So, maybe also, when you come back, you can also tell us, these are all the organizations we work with that do those things, that focus on, I don't know if there are any. There might be very few. I have no idea. But I would imagine that you are very much, I guess, or we're, I guess, we rely on, we would have to kind of agree the city. We don't do a whole lot of things, but we partner with a lot of people.
It's part of that, us partnering with the community to make sure that we address these issues.
So, through what organizations, right? That would be great to say, we work with the XYZ, whatever juveniles, you know, and that's what they do. That's all they do.
Right.
But it affects the work you do.
Right. Oh, yeah. Like, that example I gave about working with Neoces County Juvenile Justice Probation.
Right.
And Homer Flores, he's the chief probation officer over there. When we said, hey, this is our issue, these kids, they're not, the auto theft, it's a nonviolent crime. So, he's got other kids in there in the lockup sort of for murder and real serious crimes. So, how can we still have an impact on these young men and women? And they created this program to, you know, bring these kids in, check them themselves in on the weekend. And they might have to spend the weekend so they know they're not out there doing something bad on the weekend. They got ankle monitors, that extra probation officer. But without us teaming with them, he didn't know what the challenges we had with these young people. So, it's important that we always partner with the different places of the...
Right. But that'd be great.
Judge McCoy has been great, too.
To let us know, like, which ones. Councilman, can you?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you guys for arresting everybody for reckless driving. I mean, I feel way safer in Corpus right now. I don't know if it's just only me, but I always see speeders on SPID and going home, and it's kind of scary, you know? So, thank you guys for that. One of my questions is, how many guns do you estimate that's illegal in Corpus Christi that they have on them? Like, how many weapons, you think?
So, that would be hard to say. So, if you, obviously, a 15-year-old can't legally possess a handgun.
Correct.
And be out in the street with it. So, we know there's 224 stolen last year. We're averaging about 20 a month stolen right now. And so, we know those are in the hands of young people, or people that there shouldn't be in the hands of.
We have a really big problem with guns in Corpus Christi with children, kids, right?
I would agree with that, yeah.
Is there any possible way, I don't know how the law works, but is there any possible way how you guys do DWI checkpoints at times? I don't know if they also do that or not. But is there any possible way we could do checkpoints for guns on minors and children, anything like that?
Right. So, we do do DWI checkpoints or driver, I'm sorry, not DWI. We only do driver's license checkpoints.
Okay.
And we, those are, it's one of the big things a gang has historically done, and the violent crime unit done. And then, what we do is, we look for intelligence-led policing. It's one of the things we're doing, where we're seeing these hotspots. And if we've seen some crime, or a lot of, what's occurring now is a lot of people calling in. There's been shots fired in my area. We're tracking those. And we'll go out and do a driver's license checkpoint at that time. One of the challenges, I'll say, we'd all agree with, is not being able to have a juvenile curfew anymore. That was, the state legislature did away with cities' ability to do that. And so, when we do a driver's license checkpoint, we can check that they have a driver's license. It used to be if you had a car load of 16-year-olds, you had the curfew, right? And then, we could take them into custody, get them home to their parents, search the car. Was there drugs? Was there firearms that we could, you know, seize? We don't have that anymore. But we still can do a driver's license checkpoint. And then, a lot of times at those locations, we're able to develop probable cause to search the vehicle or make an arrest. But if we can't, they've got their driver's license, and there's other 15, 16-year-olds, there's nothing we can do, you know, legally.
What I noticed in Corpus Christi is, majority of the shootings is coming from ages between 18 and 23, more or less. And a lot of these accidents, crimes, is coming from bars and coming from after-hours locations where they hold a TABC license, which they're supposed to close at 2:00 AM, but they stay open till 4:00 AM. I also noticed that there are some other establishments are opening till 4:00 AM without a TABC license and doing a BYOB type of deal, come afterwards, you know, after 2:00 AM when the bar closes, and come party over here, or whatever the case is. And that's where a lot of these shootings are happening, and robberies and stuff. I understand with the chief, we discussed it some time ago, that you guys are working on something to regulate. If you have a TABC license, you must close at 2:00 AM. Is that correct?
That is one of the things we are working on right now. If you want to, do you want to speak about that, Chief? Yeah. I'm asking for a lifeline here.
Todd Green, I'm the Assistant Chief with the, over the Investigations Bureau, which includes our Narcotics and Vice Investigations Division. And yes, that is something that we're exploring right now, is drafting an ordinance or changing language in the ordinance that would prohibit any premises that has taverns, bars, from staying open after hours, after 2:00 AM.
Because we got, we did that away with, not the smoke shops, but what's it called?
The lounge, yes.
Yeah. Okay. I was just wondering, because I feel like most, majority of the crime happens in those parking lots, you know? And it's kind of scary, you know?
We certainly did. We noticed that. And that's something that we did. And the majority of what we're talking about here is what we call intelligence-led policing, hotspot policing. That's what, it goes by different terms, but that's what we're doing, is we're gathering intelligence on trying to figure out where our biggest problems are, and when they are, what time of the day they're occurring, what time of the night. And by the fact that we were able to add additional officers to create this violent crime unit, at 2:00 in the morning, prior to having this unit in place, we were often shorthanded. We didn't have enough officers to really go out and proactively target areas that we knew were probably problematic. We were responding to calls. Now, we're actually proactively identifying those locations ahead of time. We're going out there, not just the violent crime unit. My Narcotics and Vice unit is supporting that. We are doing operations, undercover operations in many of these locations. We're assisting the violent crime unit. So, we're being much more, instead of being reactive, we're being more proactive.
Great.
And we're using that intelligence. And then, we're sharing it with our partners, with the District Attorney's Office, working with them, working together as a team, working with our detectives.
Awesome. When you guys bring it to council, I will support that because I think that's a must. I think it'll be great for Corpus Christi, and hopefully, reduce some crime. Thank you.
Councilman, or Councilwoman, Gumbos.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. That's a lot of information. So, thank you, Councilman Vaughn, for asking for this to be brought to us. As far as crime prevention, I have my appointee, Dr. Adaisa, and Mariah, that were on the Crime Prevention Board. And I believe that there was studies that have been done and that have not actually been presented to the Crime Prevention Board. Is there something that we, because apparently, there's a lot of, you know, we just need more policing instead of actually looking at programs. Is there something that we can do to go around this, that maybe if I could bring something to you directly, if it can't be presented to the whole prevention board? I'm just wondering about that. I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, no, no. Very good question. David Blackman, I'm Assistant Chief over the Operations Section. And so I guess to start with, is the literature that was brought to us at the Crime Prevention Board to start with is, it was actually 10 or 15 years old-
Okay.
...date.
I had not seen it.
It was an outdated study to start with, but-
Okay.
And then, as everybody knows right now, in our, the crime prevention is funding our officers, and that's, and we're actually operating at a deficit. So bringing programs forth right now would be detrimental to our goal of putting officers out there. But when we talk about crime prevention programs, you know, traditionally, what we don't want is to create a program, because we've seen it, we've seen the DARE program, we've seen these other ones, and they have a shelf life, and then they're ineffective, right? I think we've all seen that and agree with that. So what we decided to do many years ago, whether it was the PAL program, which is over 30 years old, whether it was the current Bike Patrol program, which is, I started with some other officers, whether it's the Direct Patrol program, which I was proud to be involved in from the onset, these programs are over 30 years old. They're proven programs. These officers are doing crime prevention. They're mentoring in the schools. They're doing things like our back-to-school operation, Safe Return, where we're getting kids in. And it's more than giving shots and giving haircuts and bicycles and stuff. It's mentoring these youth, and these officers are the ones that are going to these houses. They're the ones that are going to these houses repeatedly, because we talked about, how do we change a child's life not knowing what they're going through, right? We can put them into a special program, but they go back home, it's the same thing. And there is no person better on the line than that officer. So we've created these programs, which are proving, where we're getting these officers out there, and they're doing crime prevention.
For example, you know, the just say no to drugs, is that working?
No, it didn't work.
No, it doesn't work, so-
It was a program, it was a program that was a failure.
Okay.
Which one, Councilwoman?
Just say no to drugs. Yeah, okay. The other thing that I wanted to do was bring up, like you say, I mean, you don't know what is actually working or not working. I do know that parent involvement is a big, you know, huge part of this, right? I was just wondering, too, about, like, my grandson, he's been asking, before I even got into council, about a basketball, half-a-court, half-court basketball, because he has to cross, he's 12 now, but he would have to cross Staples to go to Hamlin, which is very trafficky, or cross Weber again, very trafficky. And I think that these type of, like, I don't think it's that much, but could it come from the police budget instead of just our general? I mean-
Well, it can come, it can come from community partners, Ms. Campos. I mean, we, and that's, the PAL program is funded 100% by private partners, industry, whether it's Valero and donations and that kind of stuff. Our community partners repeatedly step up. This shouldn't be something that is, these programs shouldn't be something that are solely funded by the city, right?
By the general, yeah.
It should be something that the community itself has buy-in in, right? So, and I think that should be the goal. If we need to put up a basketball court, officers love to play basketball, and we will show up there.
So tell me what we need to do, and we'll do it. Like, he, his name is Andrew, and Andrew said, Grandma, I'll go with you. And I said, I know, I know that you want this really badly. But again, I don't know if he'll see it in his young life, and, you know, while he's still there, because again, he's 12, he's been telling me since he was like nine. So anyway, let me know what we need to do, get together.
Send me the location, and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, it's Sherwood Park.
Yeah, I think that's how things get done, right?
Okay. That is, but the other is, I wanted to see also the numbers of, by district, you know, to see where are these crimes happening? Because, you know, it just seems like there's a killing somewhere everywhere, you know? And I'm like, well, it's not happening here, you know, in my area, but we may not know that. I don't know, but-
And we can, and we have the ability to break down, but I will say that crime is transient, right? Whether it's these individuals and these, that may be in cars chasing each other across town, and unfortunately ends up happening over around the mall, that doesn't mean that the mall is not a safe place. It just means that's where this crime happened to occur, just like-
That's true.
You know, it's just like over in my old area around Lamar, we talked about earlier, that, you know, really, that is, I worked there for 20 years. It is a fairly safe place, but unfortunately, you may have people come in from an outside area for one reason or another. So it's about removing the criminal element, broken windows, all that kind of stuff. So, and it's, so there's a lot more than just, hey, crime is here, and this is a number, and it's not a safe place, I think.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention, or I noticed about the aggravated assaults? No, wait, let me see. No, I guess it's, yeah, I guess the high numbers are still aggravated assaults. And the, you know, you've got like 1595 from 2017, and 2037 now, and 2024. Again, I know, you know, it's an ongoing issue, I mean, for all these crimes. But again, tell me, what is it that we're doing to try to minimize aggravated assault?
So one of the things we're doing, and Deputy Chief Breedlove talked on that a few minutes, is that, you know, we're looking at these hotspots, the reasoning, where these issues are happening, just like you're talking about, hey, where can we have these crimes? Even though they may be transient, or they happen at around closed bars, as Councilmember Cantu said, or they happening with our racing people, they're coming down. So that was kind of the impetus of our violent crime unit. And when Deputy Chief Breedlove talked on saying that we took, we've taken 64 guns off the streets, where we've arrested almost 400 people also, and that is since November of '24.
Okay.
So it has not been that many months. So these officers are out there, they're aggressively attacking this problem, and our hope is that we know that we have a young group of people out there that are disregarding the safety of other people, that through these operations, we're going to bring down those numbers.
Well, the other thing is, I was just thinking, too, is it because it's easier to like order guns or get guns, or what? I mean-
I don't, it's not necessarily easier to order guns. I mean, we have some parents that are reckless with the storage of their guns, and we have some things like straw purchases, where we have people that can buy guns, they go buy guns for people that aren't allowed to have guns, right? But like we talked about a minute ago, that a large number of these guns are coming out of vehicles where people aren't responsible enough to take the guns out of their cars, especially when they're going in for the night, and even, on top of that, even locking their doors, you know? It's just, these kids are walking through neighborhoods and they're checking doors, you know, and they're getting a very large number of guns out of these cars.
One other thing is, in my district, District Two, is the Ocean Drive, you know, car racing. I still, they haven't called me directly, but I know it's still happening. I don't know if y'all are still meeting with some of the neighbors, or-
We're out there every night. We're running heavy operations on the weekends, and we're resting probably six to eight people a weekend between Ocean Drive and 358. And some of these ones on 358 are speeds of 115 to 120 miles an hour. And so we're putting these people in jail. I will say that I met with the DA last week, and we are, I mean, we're very hard-headed on this issue, and I believe to really stop this is we're going to have to start seizing these vehicles. The state law allows us to. We just, we're having to get that first one through the DA's office. So our hope is, once we get, once we start taking these vehicles, this problem's going to start declining.
I agree. I think if you remove that vehicle, it's going to be like, okay, that's it, you know? Okay. I think that was basically it. So again, thank you for bringing this, you know, report. And again, I would love to see it even maybe quarterly or something like that, but thank you.
Yeah, and just to kind of set expectations, Mayor. We talked about the process, and I know Councilmember Hernanda said he would like to see from, you know, from what we're doing to the end result, you know? We have a good plan, and we're going to keep putting people in jail. We can give you the information that the DA is willing to provide to us. We're not necessarily entitled to know everything, their convictions and stuff, so we'll work on trying to get that.
Right. Yeah, I think more information is better here.
No, I agree.
And I'm happy to talk to you guys offline, because there's a lot. We need, I want to know racing violations. So how many violations are you writing, right, every weekend since? This has been a long time. I mean, we met at someone's house on Ocean Drive twice, probably, I don't even know, how many years ago was that? A couple? Oh, I thought it was more. Yeah, there've been, yeah, at least a couple, two, three years ago. So it's an ongoing, I get it, but there was a little uptick, you know, and we hear about it, and we've got our guests that come from out of town. You know, it's a big news, and so you guys know. But at the end of the day, you know, it's the action. You, you know, hit them with a vine, seize the car, I mean, you just do, you've got to go all out, kind of with the little illegal animal sales, same thing, in those parking lots. You know, you've just got to teach them by saying, we're not going to put up with it and go somewhere else and do those things, not in the city, out of the city. But anyhow, I think that also what's very important, and I'm interested in knowing, and again, and I'm going to ask y'all to come back next month with a more detailed, a lot more detailed information, so that we can see a clearer picture of where we are in different categories, because we're very interested in that, very interested, especially when numbers go up that involve children. My question was, how do our family-related and gun-related crimes, right, because that's what this is really about, how do they compare to similar cities our size? So that's very interesting to know. Where do we sit on a scale, right? We have no idea. So that's, I would like to know that. And then, what else did I have? Yeah, what's the percentage of these family-related crimes that are repeat, you know, that are individuals that are recommitting crimes? So that's very important, I think, for us to know, to see, what is it, is it a growing?
We do do every morning at 5:00 a.m., a report is run that identifies any repeat victim of a family violence. So we look for that, and we make sure that that case is being assigned. We take it very seriously, because we know that there's, using escalation in family violence. So we make sure that a case is getting assigned to a detective. We have a grant for Violence Against Women program, where we have advocates, that we can get in touch with them and get them the resources they need. We make sure we work with the District Attorney's Office in getting these folks prosecuted. We get arrest warrants if the person wasn't arrested, the offender wasn't. So we do take that very seriously when we see a repeat of victim of family violence.
Okay, and the other thing, I think it was brought up, you know, are there geographic hotspots throughout the city where certain crimes are being committed? I'm sure the answer is yes to that. But that in line with, what does every district look like? So every council member knows. I remember some years back, I'm in Five, and Five had the highest break-in or burglar, I don't know, something. Those numbers, they were the highest, and I thought that was interesting, you know? And there were some, I guess it was kind of a trend, right, that was going on, there were break-ins across neighborhoods. But I think that's important, that everyone from District One to Five knows, this is what my, my district's crime stats look like. That's super important. We should probably get that on a quarterly basis from you all. That way, everybody knows what they're dealing with, right? And then we can actually help. We can try to do, you know, some part in, how do we, you know, we can't just expect you all to go be everything to everyone. You can't be the missing dad that that family unit doesn't have, and maybe that's why the child is, you know, getting in trouble or what have you. But maybe we can do something on this end, in each respective district, to say, how do we, how do we come together as a community and a city to fix this, or to improve it anyway? So anyhow, let me move on. Councilman Roy.
Thank you for your presentation. One of the things I, we haven't talked about is where we're at with child trafficking and human trafficking as a whole. You know, I didn't see any particular numbers on that. You know, it's something, anytime I see a missing child or a missing anybody, person, you know, it's always tough. And I know it's critical in the first hours to 24 hours in terms of trying to help locate that individual. But can you tell me a little bit about the trend? Is there a trend? Is it going up? Is it going down? Is there, what are you doing? How is Corpus Christi in relationship to the rest of South Texas, or Texas in general? But, you know, I think that that's definitely something that I know as a parent that I'm concerned about.
Right, so it is a serious subject that we do take very seriously. We have our Organized Crime Unit that is responsible with that, and our Narcotics and Vice Division that works on that. And I can't say it's like a pressing issue here. We don't have a lot of it. But when we do, it's very tragic, and we react very quickly on it. We have had some very successful prosecutions and arrests and recoveries of victims here. But it's not something you might, I think it's a overall, often seen as, well, I'll let Chief Green talk about that.
We have our Organized Crime, Internet Crimes Against Children unit that works out of the Organized Crime Unit. We, actual child trafficking is not something that we see often, but we work closely with Homeland Security Investigations, HSI. We actually have one of our detectives, it's a task force officer with HSI, and they deal with it more than we do. Primarily what we're dealing with, what we see a lot of, and probably an increase, unfortunately an increase, is the child porn, Internet Crimes Against Children. That's primarily what we see with child porn sharing. It's an internet-based crime. Most of the time, the images, the videos that we see are not locally produced, they're produced elsewhere and shared. But we very regularly are, work in those cases. Our people work them, we work alongside H, Homeland Security Investigations. We, you know, on almost a weekly basis, we're making arrests for those types of crimes. So-
And running search warrants.
So you think that the incidence of child or human trafficking here, as opposed to some other areas that weren't, that doesn't, it's not as prevalent? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. That's good to know. I remember I attended a nonprofit organization, and they were talking about, and I don't remember the statistic, but it made it seem like every five minutes, somebody was disappearing off the streets, you know? And whether that been, that was a state statistic, they didn't specifically say it was related to South Texas, but I kind of wanted to know that. And I appreciate you giving us insight on that. So, and you used your second lifeline, so-
Yeah, I did.
You got one left.
One of the things that we also see in a lot of time, they, it's termed human trafficking as prostitution, adult women that are being prostituted, that are being managed by somebody else or forced into it or whatever. So we also deal with that. Our Narcotics and Vice, our Vice Investigators, they target prostitution, and we work with our local partners again on that. We do operations sometimes in certain establishments around town, where we have, we get tips on prostitution. We make cases in those areas, those locations. Massage parlors, unfortunately, are one of the, one of the locations that we get those complaints. And anytime we conduct an investigation or make a case or make an arrest, we always have that individual, we may be arresting them for prostitution, but we always offer them the opportunity to outcry. And if they claim they're being trafficked, then we, you know, we follow up on that. We, you know, we move forward with that. So we've done several of those operations here recently. I think in most cases, the women deny being trafficked, but there's certainly signs that they are. If they don't outcry, it makes it very difficult for us.
Yeah, thank you.
And we work with a local, a local program, a local outreach group, it's called the Red Cord Initiative, and it's the Coastal Bend Wellness Center is the one that actually runs the program. It was something that actually the Police Department initiated back in 2012, I believe. And what that does, when we do an operation targeting prostitution, the same thing, we, when we make an arrest, we offer that individual the opportunity to go through a program that will enable them to get out of the life of prostitution. So we work with the District Attorney's Office, Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation, there's different- different private groups that provide resources for these individuals, these women. And it gives them an opportunity, if they enter into the program, and I believe it lasts about, it's about a one-year program, if they follow the program and they're able to complete it, then the drug chart, or the prostitution charge is dismissed. And the whole idea is to get these women out of that, that horrible lifestyle, that lifecycle that they're trapped in. And it's, it's been successful. We've had quite a few women that have gone through that program and been able to escape that. Thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Mayor, I was, maybe you're mad at me. I've been hot-miked for the last three council members, and I thought, well, I know Eric and I are making a lot of noise over here, but golly.
Really?
It is hard to be a good council member when Mike's hot all the time. I'll go, I'll race through this quickly. Chief, I think we actually were working on a meeting, and I think maybe I missed, I missed it. So I suspect a lot of this is what you guys were going to tell me. This is fascinating. I think the reason you're getting so many questions, we're really interested, right? That's the good stuff. And I think we want to share data. I knew that one of the TV stations was used, was doing a story yesterday on speeding, and then I think we had the water issue, and they threw them off, so they're going to circle back around. So they're going to be asking all the questions that I think we're asking today. I want to thank you. I want to thank everything you do. I had a unique opportunity to go to your graduation a couple of weeks ago. Oh, my, the future's bright. You guys, you do a great job yourselves, but your young men and women that are coming up through the ranks are just amazing people. So that's, I'm proud to be associated with that. Yeah, you were talking about crime data, even if you just did it by zip code, I think that would be kind of interesting. So my issues are, my question, which you don't have to answer today if you don't want to. Yeah, I too am interested about gangs and gang-related, because I just don't know, you know? I just, the Scott family, Gang of Four, we're, we're just our own thing. But so if you can educate us on that. Homelessness, panhandling, especially around downtown, I don't know if it's an issue or not, but I knew it used to be. And so it'd be great to hear that we feel like, you know, our downtown tourists, and our downtown businessmen and women, for all them to hear that it's better today than it was. And if it's not better today, then what are we doing about it? Drug issues, drug-related issues, that's all new to me. So I'd love to get caught up. I'm just curious if fentanyl is still an issue, and if that's something we're dealing with down here. I mentioned downtown focus, that'd be awesome. Can you talk about the drones? Is that something y'all have talked about publicly before, and I just wasn't around, or that top secret?
That is in his initiative, and...
Like, that drone that's following Roland Baretta around? He wants to know when you're going to stop.
The drones are my favorite sub, y'all not in a hurry to get out of here.
No, I want to. No, not that.
I love...
You've got five minutes.
All right. So...
You've got two minutes.
So, yeah, so a lot of people don't know that not only do we have drones, we have 32 drones.
I did not, I said you had five, and...
No. So, so it is, it is something that has really taken off over the years, and no pun intended, okay, pun intended. So, we use them a couple of different ways, Councilman. So, we, when we started using our drones, we use them for our SWAT team and some other stuff. And then we thought, hey, this is, this is a great de-escalation tool, right? Because de-escalation is time and distance. So we thought, well, if we can, if we have people in crisis, and we can get these, these drones up there in the air, not only can we, we see them, but they have external speakers, so we can talk to them. So, and it has, it has been phenomenal. We, a few years back, we had a situation out in Flower Bluff, where a guy had shot at one of the deputies, and then ran out into the Oso on that island out there. And in the past, we would launch the SWAT team, and they would go out there, and hopefully, everything ended well, right? So now, we were able to put the drone up, see if he had any weapons, tell him, hey, you need to let us see your hands. And we were able to go out there and take him into custody safely. Couple of weeks ago, we had an individual out in the wetlands that was injured. We were able to put that drone up, to go out there, and those, the drones have FLIR, so we could see, see not only him, but the blood and stuff, and we were able to direct the officers into where he was and save his life. So they're, they're phenomenal. Technology changes every year. So we're continually updating our drones. Our last drone that we have purchased, we had an incident with some gang members, and there was probably eight of them. We put the new drone up, and it was actually able to pin every one of them, and follow them around till the officers could take them into custody. So the technology is just amazing. I could talk about forever. So our latest thing that we're doing, that y'all don't know, is that we actually have a drone as a first responder program. So we had went out to Trulavest out in California, they have one, one of the nation's leading drone as a first responder program. What that is, it means that these drones will actually go to calls. So we thought, man, this is a great idea. So we went out there, looked at it. So now, we actually have a larger drone that we launch off of the police department that covers the whole downtown area. So we use it in our racing operations, it will go to calls. It, you know, we fly it out about, about three miles, but we can go, if we have a jumper on the Harbor Bridge, or if we have a jumper on the New Bridge, then we can fly that thing there. And they'll get there probably before the officer does. Look at everything, see where they're at. Is there anybody up there? We have officers racing to get to the scene, so there's always the potential they could get in an accident, right? So, hey, there's nobody there, we, y'all can cut code. And not only that, the camera has a mile and a half enhancement on it. So wherever that drone's sitting, it can see a mile and a half and read license plates. So the technology, the technology in these drones, they're just amazing. So we're continuing to increase that program, and the best thing for this is that we're using, most of these we're getting are through private donations. So it is such a great program. We had, we had James Avery, which is based out of Curville, come down and say, hey, we heard about your program, we want to have lunch with you and tell us about it. And they bought us two.
That's awesome.
So, how long have you had the big drone?
Uh, we're going in about two years now, I guess.
Okay. I was on a rooftop, you know, just Friday evening, relaxing, and saw it come downtown, and stopped on a dime. That's when you start thinking about alternative ways to get home, you know, like, no, it was amazing. I assumed it was because of speeding down shoreline, and then ultimately...
Yeah, so we do that, but also, we, so we have smaller indoor drones. So, in the old days, so knuckle draggers, when we would go clear houses and stuff, you'd clear the house, and the worst place that you have to clear is the attic, because your head's going up in there to look around before anything else is up there, right? And so you're, you're just a target at that point, if there's somebody up there with a weapon. So now, we can send these drones in, they can fly the whole house, go up in the attic, look around, so we know what we have up there before we go up there. So a lot of new technology out there.
Fun stuff. Look forward to hearing more about it, more about it. I think that's awesome. I think that's kind of fun to get out into the public, like, hey, when you're racing, we're probably watching.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And not only we're watching, we've got your license plate.
Yeah. And we let them know. We'll routinely fly that when they come downtown, and we'll land it real low and sweep around.
Oh, will you really, when they're all gathering?
That way they know.
Just let them know. My last thought, Mayor, is that, again, thank you, and that I think we have a conversation next about legislation, and this concern about some of the international politics going on, in fact, things like drones. I think, what, 80% of the drones are made in China, and the parts are made in China, and we kind of like to still get our parts for our drones. So anyhow.
Yeah, and we're, and we're trying to get ahead of that. So, I mean, you know, I get the concern. I think everything's made in China at this point. But, but, you know, when the American, hopefully, when the American drones get a little bit better. Right now, they're just not there. But if that legislation does pass, we do have some comfort space for over the next few years that we won't have to worry about that.
Yeah. Great. Great. Yes, sir. Councilwoman Vaughn?
Chief, I don't think I've ever seen him get up out of a chair that fast. All you had to do was say drones, drones, boy toy. You better not be flying over my house. Yeah. I just wanted to thank you, Chief, and all of y'all for presenting this. The reason I asked for it was not because I don't have trust in you, because I totally do. I think we've got probably the best Department of Police in the state. I do, I really do mean that. It's because I had so many people ask me, haven't there been a lot of shootings and stabbings? And I noticed it, too, that it's been on the news. And so I think it's important that y'all, it's nice to see y'all highlighted, so people understand, especially about the TikTok. No one would have known that. And these people racing with the cars down the road, that's been going on since I was on council before. And y'all have really gotten a hold of that, and I appreciate it so much. I think y'all are just doing a great job. That's all the kissing up I'm going to do, but I do appreciate it. The only thing I would add, two things, homeless, Mark brought that up. I'd like to know if they're involved in any of the assaults or any of that. But the other thing, don't need to know right now. Other thing I noticed on the homicides, in 2022, they were 30. If there's any good news on a homicide. But 2023, they went down to 18, and then they went to 21. I actually thought we had more than that in the city. So...
So that's the, involving a firearm.
With the, oh, with the firearm.
The overall...
So there is more.
Right. So in 2022, we did have an increase. And we attributed a lot of that to the bars reopening, and people getting back out, and people settling scores with one another. That year was, there was several spousal homicides, family-related ones also, involving vehicles. I think we, two different spouses ran over one another in their vehicle. So, and one thing that with, between a homicide and aggravated assault often, is how quick that person gets to the hospital, and what ER doctor is there. We are fortunate enough to have two trauma, trauma centers here at Bay Area, and then at Spawn Shoreline. And with the advancements in emergency medicine, you know, we see the homicide rates coming down.
But we are down.
Yes, they are.
Right. We are down, so that's good news. Thank you all very much.
And Councilman Kent, too.
Thank you. One last question, because I think one of the news stations is live-streaming right now, so you have like a thousand people watching. How fast can you go to jail for reckless driving? Like, what's the speed limit? If the speed limit's 55...
Right. So it's all about the condition of what's going on. It's, I think the statute says a wanton disregard for public safety, how you're driving. So usually prima facie, what we call is like, usually 25 miles an hour over, can be
Forward. Okay.
In certain circumstances. But obviously, when you get up over 100 miles an hour, that's definitely, you know, on the, that's, that's reckless driving. But it could be as much as 20 miles an hour, but the way you're driving. You're going in and out, you're not signaling, you're cutting people off.
Correct.
We have, with the advances in technology of our, of our camera systems, we have countless hours of video of officers trying to catch up to these people and the way they're driving. But usually that, and it's the condition of the roadway, too, has something to do. If you're on Ocean Drive, and you're only 20 miles an hour, but you're coming into that S curve, and you're, you're cutting people off, that can be reckless driving compared to 25 miles an hour over on the freeway at night, when no one's around, and you're not cutting anybody off. That may just be a speeding ticket. So it's really what the officers, officers' observation is, and whether they consider that to be a public safety issue.
And one last question. On hotspots, bars, clubs, if you guys get so many calls at one location, or so much crime at one location, can the city require the owner to have off-duty police officers there on peak times and on the weekends, when it's, when the crime is up?
So I don't know of any ordinance that we have in place right now to require that.
Okay.
But...
Talking about bars?
A bus, yeah. A bar, yeah. Or, or any business where they're congregating, the question is...
Like a hotspot, like, you know?
Could we require them to hire officers?
Take some actions.
All right.
Okay. I was just wondering, once again, thank you guys for giving this as update. And I look forward to seeing it another, what, 30 days, she said, Mayor?
I would like it in 30 days, but I'm going to follow up on what you just said. So what are the, you said, actions, or what did she say? That they're not required.
They're not required right now, but if it's...
But he said there are...
No, they're, they're, we can't require somebody to hire off-duty officers.
Right.
We are working currently right now with some, some of our local vendors and shops that they want to hire officers. So we're, we're looking at that, in that direction right now. But if they don't, then there's other things we can bring to bear. We can bring TABC. If there's, if they're crime-ridden, if they're a bar, we can work to take their liquor license away. There's, there's things that we can do outside of direct law enforcement to impact them, to change their behavior.
Right.
So, you know, we can, there's parking lot ordinances, we can not allow people to gather after a certain time in parking lots. There's, there's things that we work with right now that are impacting those dilemmas, let you speak.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Good to know.
Thank you.
And we will come back, hopefully, after we have some conversation about shutting down the bars that carry liquor licenses at 2 o'clock, because that is the problem.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, just for the, just so we kind of know, the chief heard many things here, but we're going to come back, and we'll check the schedule for April or May, April probably. But we're going to bring things like more demographics, more crime across what city council districts, unsolved cases, things like prosecution, prosecution rates, community engagement, gang activity, drug-related activity.
I've got the whole list right here.
So if I, if I might, I just want to, I'd like to try to manage some expectations. So one, we are completely dependent on the DA's office to provide prosecution rates, what they, how they adjudicate, what they plead out, those types of things. We can't promise you that we're going to give a presentation with those numbers. I just want to say that ahead of time. The other is, I think it would be important, well, I know that you requested that, Councilman. Sure, and he can, yeah, me too. The other thing is, we might be better served to have separate presentations. Again, we can talk about gangs in itself, and well, we could tie up several hours with, with council, but I think gang would be an interesting presentation. Narcotics would be an interesting, separate conversation. There's some nuances in there, if you want to get into that.
Well, let's, let's talk offline, because I think there's, there's a, there's a broad, you know, overview. And then there's, there's the detailed, where it would be just one, maybe just one topic, if you will.
Of course.
Yeah, but...
And we break, and we do break out our crime by district. We've done that for years. So that's, as a matter of fact, your Crime Control District has asked us to bring that back, that board, so we can, that's an easy presentation for us.
I'll compare my, my notes with Peter's, just so we can get some for, for next time. It's nothing you don't already have, it's just a little...
No, absolutely. We, we track a lot of data, on our fingertips. So you let us know what you want to talk about, and we're happy to talk about it.
Okay. We'll do that. And thank you. Thank you for, for being here, and thank you for everything that y'all do. We know that a lot of what you do, we don't necessarily see.
Well, you do. You, we actually came here, the underlying premise of some of our best initiatives and most impactful initiatives have been the officers that you have added to our roles.
Absolutely.
It, it just was serendipity that when racing became an issue, we graduated that extra class, right, the large class, and then another one right after that. So then we automatically had officers to apply to the racing initiative, and then we graduated another class that was over attrition. And we had enough officers to redirect and build a VCU of violent crime unit, and move, move folks to the right time, the hot hours, 5:00 to 3, or 5:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. on the days that were most impactful to violent crime. So it's just, the stars have lined up with the extra personnel. And I, I understand you like programs, but I'll, I'll say it till I fall over dead, there's no better crime deterrent than an officer in uniform and a marked car in your neighborhood. And enough officers to have time to be proactive.
Right.
We were, we run around reactive, call to call to call, that's why you never get ahead of initiatives. Now, we're turning the page there. We're, we're gaining our officer numbers with enough vehicles, that you've purchased 40 more vehicles, $4 million in Fusion that he gave us to split this budget. So with that, you'll see more officers in uniform, in marked cars, in the field, impacting crime preemptively.
Right.
That is the goal, and that's what's happening.
Yeah, not to mention our police substations also.
Substation, that's exactly right. Better working conditions, better training conditions.
Right. We'll be, many of us are at the West Ghout Groundbreaking. And just as a reminder, this coming Monday, we'll be at the South Side, at the South Side Police Substation Groundbreaking, right there at Del Mar. So come on, we'll see council there. I think it's at 10 o'clock, over there by, right across the street from the Bill Wit Pool, so.
That's exciting times.
Yeah, it is.
But, again, y'all, y'all should be proud of yourselves, because the investment is paying off. We are making progress. 64 guns off the street in just a few months is no joke. Dozens of arrests, dozens of cars taken, right? Yeah, we, we have some work to do with the DA's office, and we're working on that.
Yeah.
They're our partners. We, you know, I'm not going to throw them under the bus. They have their own, their own issues that they have to work through. So we'll get there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. One last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Like you said, yes, we, I'm appreciative, and you're appreciative, of all the extra police that we've been able to put on, on the streets. But like you've said before, we will never have enough officers to police ourselves out of this. So again, I just would like to reiterate that it still comes back to our responsibilities, you know?
Sure.
How we, you know, conduct ourselves, and, and how we raise our children, and what, you know, what's, you know, we're, we're going to be, I mean, I, right now, we're coming into unprecedented times. Stress levels, all kinds of things are going to be happening, and that's going to affect, you know, what's happening in the family. So I just want to be just somewhat proactive. Like you said, we can't police ourselves out of it, but just have an open mind. Thank you.
I have a very open mind. But I think two things can be true at the same time. You can need to grow a department for more proactive work, and you can work in... You can need to grow a department for more proactive work, and you can work in, in your community for better social programs. One does not have to take from the other. I think, I think that's what Chief Blackman was trying to spell out earlier.
Right.
And so the narrative that, well, can we just take that from the Police Department and give it to the community program? I think you alluded to that, is that not something that I respectfully buy into. I think we do need to grow our Police Department, we do need proactive time, we need presence. You need to see a police officer in your neighborhood in a car driving around, not just